Good evening, welcome to our Tuesday United Youth Meeting. I'm Madam Clerk. Let's stand for the President, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have any presentations tonight, so let's get right into our community call.
The Attorney General Commissioner, ladies and gentlemen, we have several items tonight for consideration. First is Resolution Number eighteen dash eight sixty-eight to authorize an agreement with Strand Associates in professional engineering consulting services for MS four program funding support for Montgomery County at a cost not to exceed forty-nine thousand three hundred dollars through June thirtieth of two thousand nineteen. And we have two resolutions to authorize a reduction of Sidewalk Performance Fund. First is eight sixty-nine for W C Holdings LLC for an amount of fifteen thousand seventy-nine dollars and twenty-four cents for the springs at the villages of Whining Creek, section three in Washington Township. Second is eight seventy for B W C Holdings LLC in the amount of thirty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents for Creekside at the villages of Whining Creek, section two in Washington Township.
Move go approve. All those in favor? Aye. Juvenile Court, Joe?
Under juvenile court, we have Resolution eight seventy-one to authorize a grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Youth Services for the ongoing operation of the Center for Adolescent Services CAS facility in the amount of three million six hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars through June thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen. With the approval.
One in favor? Aye. Monday Community Court, Ms. Stichin? Joe?
Under Monday, we have Resolution eight seventy-two to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction for funds being made available under the Ohio Community-Based Correctional Facility Program in the amount of seven million six hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Move go approve. All those in favor? Aye. Miami Dally Regional Crime Lab?
Under the crime lab, we have Resolution eight seventy-three to authorize an agreement with the City of Vandelia to provide crime lab services in the Miami Valley Crime Laboratory as operated by the Montgomery County Court. With the approval.
All those in favor? Aye. County Administrator?
Under the Clerk's office, we have approval of the minutes of the meetings on June the twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. Resolution eight seventy-four, approval of bills, and eight seventy-five, approval of travel expenses. Both of those lists are available in the Clerk's office.
Move go approve. All those in favor? Aye. Administrator? So, eight. Resolution eight seventy-six is the approval of personnel actions. The met list is available in the Clerk's office and was reviewed in this morning's executive session. Resolution eight seventy-seven authorizes a lease agreement with S P Proform LLC on behalf of the Clerk of Court's Auto Title Division for the leasing of twelve hundred square feet of office space located at fifty-five fifty-two Moore Springbrough Pike and Moraine through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, with options to renew. Eight seventy-eight authorizes a vendor's license agreement for space rental on Courthouse Square for Little Jimmy's Italian Icy through December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Eight seventy-nine amends the contract with Business Plans Incorporated for Flexible Spending Account Plan Administration and Cobra Administration Services, increasing the agreement by fifty thousand dollars for an amount not to exceed three hundred and ten thousand and extending the term through June thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen. And I have three agreements through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, and this is through all for the employee health insurance program. Eighteen eighty is with Optum Bank for the administration of the Montgomery County Health Savings Account Enrollment and Contribution Program. Eighteen eighty-one is with U M R Incorporated for the administration of the self-funded Montgomery County Health Plan in an amount not to exceed four million one hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Eighty-two is with Med Impact Healthcare System for the administration of the Montgomery County Pharmacy Benefit Management Program in an amount not to exceed five hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars. And the next two are price agreements, and these are through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty, with options to extend. Eight eighty-three, Barrett Paving Materials for crushed stone, sand, and gravel, the asphalt portion for environmental services. And eight eighty-four, also with Barrett Paving Materials for crushed stone, sand, and gravel, the aggregate portion for environmental services. Move go approve. All those in favor? Aye. Environmental services, yeah, I know that you are.
Thanks very much. Resolution eight eighty-five is to authorize a hundred percent release of the surety with B W C Holdings for the villages of Whining Creek Boulevard's section six development. Eight eighty-six is to accept the twenty percent surety for the villages of Whining Creek Boulevard's section six development in the amount of eighty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. And then we would like to amend a couple of agreements. The first is Resolution eighty-seven with Reliable Construction Services, and that is for the M C S W D T R F fuel station demolition and tank removal by adding forty-five hundred dollars to the original amount for a total of seventy-five thousand nine hundred dollars, and extending the term of the agreement to August thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. And lastly is Resolution eight eighty-eight, actually C D M Smith for consulting services for the N ten Oyster River Station in Porch Main, and that is to extend the term of the agreement to December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, at no additional costs in account.
Move go approve. All those in favor? Aye. Nolan Dade, you can't.
Yes, Resolution eight eighty-nine is to approve the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen state fiscal year permanent appropriations of twenty-eight million seventy thousand four hundred and five dollars for county offices and agencies that are appropriated on a state fiscal year basis.
Move go approve. All those in favor? Aye. You have some to talk.
Under Job and Family Services, we have several substitute care agreements that are good through March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Eight ninety is with Beach Acres, eight ninety-one with George Junior Republic in Pennsylvania, eight ninety-two with Unified Dwelling Incorporated, and eight ninety-three with Your Road to Success Incorporated.
Move go approve. All those in favor? Aye. Development Services. Community Economic Development.
Thank you, Commissioner. Resolution eight ninety-four approves an economic development government equity edge agreement with the City of Union for the developing corporation project in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars or six percent of total project cost, whichever is less.
Move go approve. All those in favor? Aye. And Eric, can't remember, which one is that?
This is a manufacturing company that's going to be new to Montgomery County, and they manufacture pole barns.
Oh.
Yeah, and they're actually, they're going to be taking the old Tico Metals, Tico Project in the City of Union. So it's a nice reuse of an existing building. It's a good project, twenty, about twenty jobs.
That's great. Good. And then under the county commissioners portion, we have a hearing, eighteen eight ninety-five, which is a proposed increase to Montgomery County's sales tax. And so, Joe, I'm going to turn it over to you.
First, I would turn it over to our Chief of the Civil Division, because I believe as a part of the legislature, you need to swear in everybody who's going to provide testimony.
That is very true. Is anyone else?
We have a couple people that are signed up.
Okay. Tina Rockcliffe, David Isrodi, and Russ Joseph, you will stand.
I'm not sure if David has shown.
Oh, okay. I want to see him.
Someone's on the other end.
Okay.
All right, and Ms. Bab too. If you'll just stand and raise your right hand, please. Do you solidly swear to tell the tree, the whole tree, and nothing but the trees, so help me God.
I do.
Thank you.
We'll call him out. Yeah, we'll have to call him out. Yeah, thanks.
That's okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chass.
So before we hear testimony, I would like to make a presentation with regard to the subject of the public hearing this evening, which is proposal to increase the Montgomery County sales tax rate from one percent to one point two five percent, to an increase of a quarter of one percent. A public hearing this evening and the presentation is really the final step of a process that began, began over a year ago, when the commissioners convened the first meeting of our five-year Financial Plan Advisory Committee. The county has a long history of bringing together representatives from the business community and other members of the community to pull together, advise the commissioners, and develop long-range financial plans, particularly for our general operating fund. And we've been operating in that fashion since nineteen eighty-nine, when that first multi-year financial plan was put into place. So that the most recent plan is the one that we're going to be talking about and presenting this evening, along with the recommendations regarding the proposed increase to the sales tax. This presents a lot of work from, and the results of some very, very solid input and deliberations, not only from the five-year financial plan committee, but also working with all of the staff, working with all of the elected officials and agencies, as we looked at the county's general fund financial situation, the path forward, the challenges that we face, both in terms of providing services as well as having the revenues in order to fund those services. So I want to really thank everyone who's participated in that process, all of the members of the five-year financial plan, all of the elected officials, all of the agency heads and directors that have been involved in this. And then I also need to particularly thank Mr. Tim Nolan, who is our O M B Director and really provides that focal point to pull all of the various pieces of the puzzle together. First, just a quick overview of the Montgomery County General Fund. Our general operating fund for two thousand and eighteen is a hundred and fifty-four point seven million dollars. That's actually six million dollars below the general operating fund that we had in two thousand and eight, pre the Great Recession. So we continue to operate at a level that is below the recession, the pre-recession revenue streams that we had. When you look at the various functions that are funded in the general operating fund in Montgomery County, by far the largest is judicial and law enforcement. That's a hundred and nine million dollars and makes up just over seventy percent of the overall general fund. And those are all of those mandated services and mandated functions that county really carry out for the state. So you've got the Sheriff's Department, the jail, prosecutor's office, all of the various divisions inside the common pleas court, the general division, probate, domestic relations. You've got all the functions at the Clerk's office, you've got the coroner, all of those various pieces that are, make up our judicial and law enforcement functions under Montgomery County. The next largest piece is general government. That's thirty million dollars, or almost another twenty percent. Here again, those are mandated services. Those are the auditor, the treasurer, the board of elections, the recorder, records and archives, all of those functions that citizens utilize every day, whether it's making sure that we have high-quality elections, whether it is making sure that taxes are collected for all the taxing jurisdictions through the treasurer's office, whether it's all of the real estate functions and other functions that are provided through the auditor's office. All of those functions fall into that thirty million dollars. Social services makes up about four percent, and that is really another one of those mandated pieces. That is our mandated share. So in order to pull down the large amounts of state federal dollars that we use for most of our social services, there is a mandated local share that has to be provided. That's what that six point two million represents. Community development is five point two million. That is really the one area in that entire hundred fifty-four point seven million dollar budget that has discretionary funding in it. And those are the programs that the commissioners utilize to provide funding for job creation, economic development, job training, community development, all of the things that really help us to invest and drive our community and drive, really, the recovery out of the Great Recession, and really build the workforce that we need, so that we've got folks to fill the jobs that are created. The second last piece of this is two million, two point six million, is debt service. That is a very low amount, and we have taken a strong policy position to keep debt low. We don't issue a lot of debt. Really, at this point, the only debt that we've got outstanding to the general fund is some of the debt that we issued for the Juvenile Justice Center. And we anticipate that by two thousand and twenty-four, we will have paid off all of that debt. Last piece is environmental and public works. That's primarily, here again, mandated functions, some of the functions that are funded out of the general fund for cladding, et cetera, in the engineer's office, as well as stormwater management responsibilities that we take on for the state. So when you look at that hundred and fifty-four point seven million dollars, seventy percent is law enforcement and judicial and criminal justice, another thirty, twenty percent is general government. So that ninety percent of those funds out of that hundred fifty-four point seven million really are for mandated services and the sort of general governmental functions that all the citizens in Montgomery County and the state of Ohio expects counties to be able to carry out and provide. So where are we in terms of our budget? What is it that has really driven the recommendation that I've made to the commission with regard to increasing the sales tax? The biggest piece of this has been the ongoing set of revenue reductions and losses of state shared revenues that have really driven our budget in a negative direction. Since two thousand and eight, we've reduced budgets in Montgomery County by over thirty million dollars. That's almost a twenty percent reduction since two thousand and eight, and we've eliminated five hundred positions out of those budgets. And we've maintained, in two thousand and thirteen, we've got to the final elimination and had cut from eighteen hundred to thirteen hundred positions in the general operating fund. And those thirteen hundred positions provide all of those services that are, I talked about in the last slide. We maintain that number all the way through to two thousand and eight. We've not added any positions back since two thousand and three. So we have been, from my perspective, very prudent in terms of how we manage providing services, keeping staffing at the same levels, and being as efficient as we possibly can in terms of being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. Along comes two thousand and eighteen, where the state of Ohio eliminates the managed care sales tax for Medicaid. This results in a permanent annual loss of an additional nine million dollars to the general operating fund that will start to hit in two thousand and nineteen. That really is the straw that pushed us over the edge in terms of how we manage the revenues that we have with the services that we're mandated to provide and what all of the elected and appointed officials believe are reasonable staffing and budget levels in order to provide those services. So that, when I talk about state cuts, the local government fund's been cut by fifty percent, that's seven point one million dollars in. In addition to that, the property tax reimbursements were discontinued. When you add up all the various intergovernmental revenues, it's almost twenty million dollars over the last ten years. Then you put another nine million on top of that, and it really has created the challenge that we face today. Also, when you look at the local sales tax rate, the county's sales tax rate is one percent. It's remained at that level for twenty-nine years, since nineteen eighty-nine. So while the sales tax rate has increased multiple times at the state level, we have maintained our sales tax rate at the local level. And that makes up fifty percent of all the revenue to the general fund. How does that break out? Just, it's been interesting as we've had discussions with folks in the community, including the five-year financial plan committee, that a lot of folks don't necessarily understand how sales tax breaks out. So that the seven point two five percent sales tax in Montgomery County, the lion's share of that five point seven five percent goes to the state of Ohio. One percent is what actually is collected in states in Montgomery County and has been the same since nineteen eighty-nine. By comparison, in two thousand and thirteen, the state increased the sales tax by a quarter percent. Most people don't even realize that that happened. It was done very quietly, and it just sort of happened. And then we also have the half percent that goes to the regional transit committee. So that, when you look at the breakdown, the lion's share of revenue goes to the state. If you look at that in the big picture, generally, last year, two thousand and seventeen, total taxable retail activities in Montgomery County made up eight point two billion dollars in sales activity. That generated four hundred and seventy-three million dollars in tax revenue that went to the state of Ohio as their five point seven five percent portion. The amount that was shared back to us in the local governmental fund was seven point four million. So economic, economic activity in Montgomery County generated four hundred and seventy-three million dollars for the state, and the amount that was shared back to us was seven point four million dollars. That is, and that is a trend that has been ongoing, and we don't anticipate that's going to be something that changes. So the other challenge that we face is that we really, in many respects, are on our own. So if we are going to continue to provide the mandated services at the levels that I think all of us believe need to be provided, we've got to look at how we generate that revenue at the local level. Because the state government and the federal government are not going to be sending shared revenues back downstream to local government. How that breaks out, if you were to go out and buy one of the fancy new panoramic thousand-dollar televisions, the state of Ohio gets fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents on that thousand dollars. Montgomery County, by comparison, would get ten dollars, and the R T A gets five dollars. So faced with all of those revenue challenges and the need to continue to provide those ninety percent of those expenditures that are really mandated services that we have to provide, we really looked at, how do we do that? And so my recommendation to you this evening, as part of the first public hearing, is a two-pronged approach. One is to be able to look at how we generate additional ongoing operating efficiencies out of the existing general operating fund budgets, plus then add the quarter percent sales tax increase, so that we can continue to address the strategic investments we need to make in this community and assure that we've got the revenue to sustain those services, whether they're law enforcement, criminal justice, general government services, et cetera. So the first piece of that puzzle is the ongoing operating efficiencies. Working with all of the elected officials and agency heads, we've been able to work through a process whereby we've identified an additional four point six million dollars in operating efficiencies on an annual basis across the five-year financial plan. This has not been something that has been easy for all of those various offices and elected officials. Everyone was extremely cooperative. Everyone worked really hard, and the amount of time and energy that was expended by the various offices was really appreciated. And likewise, Tim Nolan and the O M B staff worked really hard with, with all of the various operating entities and elected officials' office to identify ways that we could create these efficiencies and at the same time feel confident that we'd still be able to maintain the level of services that we currently have in two thousand and eighteen. And that brings us to the other part of the recommendation, which is an increase of a quarter percent in the county portion of the sales tax, we go from one to one point two five percent. That would generate approximately nineteen point one million dollars per year. And while that may seem like a significant amount of money when you look at it and say, well, your budget deficit is only nine million dollars, the fact is that nine million dollars grows over time, and costs grow over time, but revenues tend to be much flatter. And also, if we were to just make the cuts and not have any dollars to invest in not only the economic development and workforce and other investments that we've been making in this community, but also address some of the emerging needs that we have in the criminal justice and judicial system, as well as our facilities, my, my strong recommendation is that that would not leave us in a position where I could look at that, the three of you, and honestly tell you that we'd have the revenue in order to continue to carry out our mission and our function. So where would we invest those strategic dollars from the increase in the local county sales tax? In four areas: in the community, in people, in criminal justice, and in the government infrastructure. On the community side, that would allow us to continue to fund our economic development government equity program that provides dollars for business development and job creation. One of those grants was on your calendar earlier this evening that you approved. What also provides dollars for arts and culture. That is one of the areas where it is a really strong part of the quality of life and really helps us sell the Dayton region in Montgomery County as a place to do business and a place where people want to locate and grow their businesses and have their people. Micro enterprise grants, we have really identified a niche that previously would not serve in terms of providing very small grants of no more than twenty thousand dollars for small businesses. And then strategic community projects. On the people side, our adult workforce, as well as our youth works activities, all funded through two sources. One is some federal dollars that we get, or some state dollars, but the balance of that comes from local general fund dollars. And as those state and federal dollars get more scarce, those general fund dollars become more and more critical to make sure that we've got the adult workforce, as well as we've got young people who are experiencing quality employment opportunities while they're still in school and building the kind of work habits that we really need in the workforce. And then the last piece is preschool promise. That has been a strategic initiative of the commissioners in this community, and we look to put some dollars into that on an ongoing basis. Third piece is criminal justice, alternatives to incarceration. The state of Ohio, aside from reducing on an ongoing basis shared revenue, also is taking additional legislative actions that have significant impacts on local governments. So that now, in the, in the last year, the, the state passed legislation in felony five, which are the lowest-level felony offenders, that they are not violent offenses, the judges can't sentence them to the state prison system, and we need to keep those folks here locally. And we need alternatives, because we can't just stack them up in the county jail, particularly when the population in the county jail is averaging between seven hundred and fifty and eight hundred on a regular basis. Bail reform, likewise, this is something that is currently working through the legislation, and it really is a national initiative. And this looks at how we do a better job of making sure that the people who are in the jail need to be in the jail, and folks who do not need to be in the jail have the opportunity to be out in the community while they await the judicial process. That takes dollars, it takes staff, it takes software, it takes training, and we need to make sure that we've got dollars for that. Security, the world we live in today is not the world we lived in ten years ago. There's recently been actually some articles in the paper and some media coverage in terms of the challenges and threats to the judiciary and to the folks in law enforcement and the judicial system. We need to take that very seriously, and we've got some things that we really need to do in terms of looking at our entire criminal justice campus. Likewise, the county jail, we need to make some changes and upgrades to the jail, both in terms of the physical portions of the jail, as well as looking at staffing levels. Even the new portion of the jail was built twenty-six years ago. So we have significant needs there. And the last piece is the government infrastructure. As a local government- As a local government, we have a significant number of assets that we have to have in order to provide the services as well as we have significant capital equipment. And it's not just the usual things that you think of in terms of police cruisers and county vehicles, county trucks, et cetera, but it's also all of the IT equipment and all of the things that we need so that all the things that are provided online to the citizens are available and are reliable through the auditor's office, the recorder, et cetera. So we are a significant IT user. And then likewise, our facilities are aging and we really need to make sure that we reinvest in them appropriately so that we don't have the sort of breakdowns, whether it's plumbing or electrical, et cetera, that would cause a disruption to services to the citizens. When you look at dollars, these are the dollar allocations. So what we would propose as a part of the increase to the sales tax would be continuing to fund all of those community programs. If the sales tax is not increased, we would have to eliminate all of those programs right off the top. If we had to figure out how we cut the budget in order to address $9 million in less revenue, so there would be no economic development funding or arts and culture funding, we would eliminate micro enterprise. We believe these programs are extremely important in driving the economic recovery that we have seen since the Great Recession and really have driven the diversification of our economy and the rebound of our economy so that when you look at the Dayton region last year, we created more new jobs than any other region in the state of Ohio, more than Franklin County in Columbus, more than Kilauea, the Clough County in Cleveland, more than Hamilton County in Cincinnati. And that's a direct result of those programs and the staff that drives this progress. Strategic community projects. You'll see here that this says to be funded on an annual basis from year-end cash savings. There was a time when the county had the sort of money that we could fund a strategic community projects pot. In fact, I think most folks probably do not realize that the county provided $15 million towards the establishment and the construction of the Schuster Center. That was back in the 90s. Different time, different set of revenues. We do believe that we should have dollars for strategic community projects, but in this particular plan, we don't think that we can allocate those funds upfront and we really need to look at whether there's savings on a year-over-year basis in terms of the overall operation of the county. On the people side, we currently invest $1 million a year in the adult and youth works in terms of investing in people. These would also be eliminated off the top as discretionary expenditures if we were to not increase the sales tax and move forward to try and cut our way to achieve a balanced budget. When you look at this 19 through 23 as part of the plan, we want to continue to make sure there's dollars available for both the adult workforce piece and youth works as well as to begin to provide ongoing funding for preschool promise so that we ramp that up with $2 million in 2019, $3 million in '20 and '21, and then $4 million in '22 and '23. This would allow us to fund the next phase and the next level of services to other high need districts such as the Mad River District or the North Trews District, Trotwood, Jefferson Township, and West Carrollton. So we really believe that this is something that will really start to move that strategic initiative so that children are ready to go to school when they get kindergarten. Criminal justice. Here, we've got allocations for alternatives to incarceration. $1.5 million is what we believe is going to be our expenditure level in 19. We'd set that at a level rate. Bail reform, that number reflects ramping up staff so that we would have the staff necessary to do the assessments and process the information based upon what we know now in terms of what the draft state legislation looks like and the things that have been discussed on a statewide basis. Security, that has both improvements to the entire criminal justice complex, courts, buildings, coroner, et cetera, as well as additional security staff. So five additional staff that would be provided through the sheriff's office because the sheriff's office is responsible for security for the courts and those buildings. And then likewise, the county jail, we've got some capital dollars in there on the front end as well as then funding for five additional positions, whether they're corrections officers or deputies in the jail so that we have some additional staff in order to address some of the needs there. Last piece is government infrastructure. And what we would look to do is continue to provide funding for building improvements as well as our facility depreciation at a modest level. $2.8 million and $2 million is certainly not what our facilities people would indicate is the need, but we believe we can make it work within those dollars. And then $2 million for capital equipment to address all of those various things that we need in order to operate efficiently, whether they're vehicles, IT equipment, et So in the end, this is the totals. As you can see, that operating efficiencies are absolutely critical to having a balanced plan across the five-year financial planning cycle. So that when you take the average expenditure level of about $18 million, reduced by the operating efficiencies, there's a net cost of between $13 and $14 million on an annual basis, which allows us to have a balanced plan through the five-year cycle as well as continue to have a balanced plan beyond 2023, making reasonable assumptions around revenue growth and reasonable assumptions around expenditure. So next steps in the process, we have the hearing this evening. There's one more hearing that would be next Tuesday at the regularly scheduled county commission meeting on the 26th at 1:30 in this room. And then at that time, we'll be recommending that a resolution be placed in front of you for your consideration to increase the rate from 1 to 1.25%. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or you can open it up for comments.
Any other questions?
Okay. The chief was supposed to call the people up, so I'll speak back to her.
First would be Russ Joseph.
And while Russ is coming up, I want to mention that our county treasurer was here as well,
Good evening, commissioners, administrators. As clerk of courts, I've been involved in addressing, with addressing the budget crisis the county has been forced into, thanks to the state legislature that continues to give tax cuts to the wealthiest Ohioans while passing the bills to our local communities. Their continued splashing of local government funds and the elimination of the Medicaid managed care sales tax is the reason we're asking county residents for additional dollars. I don't think we should lose sight of that. In the clerk's office, we've come up with a way that our auto title division can help alleviate some of the county's budget constraints. Our auto title division is a self-funded operation, meaning the revenue and the expense of operating our five locations are held separate from the county general fund. We're funded by application fees for the services we provide, which include not only issuing motor vehicle titles, but also processing U.S. passport applications. Thanks to our excellent staff and strong fiscal management, we've been running a healthy budget surplus the last few years. In fact, we're in such good standing that in 2019, I'll be declaring a surplus in the fund, which will then allow me to transfer $1 million to the county general fund to help deliver these essential services our residents depend on. This alone will obviously not solve the funding crisis, but we're happy to do our part to help close the gap. I'm incredibly proud of our efficient operation and great employees who make it all possible. Over the past 10 years, my office has seen a 20% reduction in staffing while still being able to implement our e-filing services and our legal division. We will not be able to deliver the same levels of service the citizens of Montgomery County are accustomed to if we're forced to go through a round of layoffs. I applaud the commissioners and the county administrator for taking a thorough look at what options are available to solving this funding crisis. I'm glad that my office can play an important role in helping to address the situation, but the numbers don't lie. To support the services and amenities that our residents need and deserve, this revenue increase is a necessity and I hope you'll join me in supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Next would be Lisa Bab. Ms. Bab, will you come up here just to state your name for the record, please?
My name is Lisa Bab and I'm a support seeker for children. I work alongside 10 different counties and this is the only county that comes alongside their childcare centers and supports them like you guys do. So kudos to you. It is an amazing thing, what you're doing, and I just want you to know the difference that you're making. Just to put it in perspective, we have, we work alongside preschool promise and we have five coaches that support the preschools that are involved with preschool promise. We have five coaches that also work alongside the other nine counties along with the other preschools that are not in Montgomery County. So that just, you can imagine the support that your centers get compared to the other centers. So kudos to you guys for understanding the importance of early childhood education. We have coaches that come into the centers and work with them on increasing the quality. We work along, in the past, we've worked with the families. We see the difference that it's making financially. We see the difference in the four-year-olds that are prepared for kindergarten. It is really impacting your community with your families, with the children, with just the quality of what is, of whether they're ready to come to school or not. So thank you for understanding and valuing education in the way that you have. There's a lot of politicians that don't understand that and it is refreshing to be in a community that values it in the way that you have. It also impacts the workforce and if we don't continue to expand this further, it's going to impact in a negative way. If our centers are not rated at least a one star by 2020, we're going to have childcare centers that are going to be closed down because they're not going to be able to take the vouchers. And we have a lot of centers that are, have 80, 90, 95% of their children take vouchers or use the vouchers system. So we have to get these centers. So this is going to impact the workforce and also our families are going to be without quality childcare. So it's very important that we continue to expand. It was refreshing that you mentioned all of the areas that need continued support because we have the Learn to Earn latest report and I was talking to Rob and Mike Hef, I said, we've got to expand. We've got, and I think we tagged the certain areas and she said, that's exactly what we're hoping to do with this. So it's, we're being very, very purposeful with the taxes that are being spent on early childhood education. It's not just every year we go back and we look at what could we be doing better? What could we change? What could we tweak to better educate and do more with the dollars that are being given? So thank you for valuing education and supporting it in the way that you have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Dina Ratcliffe.
I think we have one more here that you have.
Members of board, my name is Dina Ratcliffe. I am Montgomery County Records Center, Records and Information Manager. On behalf of the Montgomery County Record Center and Archives, I am testifying and support the need to increase sales tax revenues for the general fund operations. The Record Center and Archives provides record storage, document conversion, and record services to county offices, agencies, and local governments in Montgomery County. The general fund supports 100% of our operations. The loss of revenue for the general fund will severely impact the Record Center and Archives. We will be forced to reduce our staff and as a result, our services. The citizens of Montgomery County will see a decrease in access to their records. The conversion of paper documents to digital formats will slow and storage costs will rise. Access to the county's archives will be limited. For county records as a whole, the negative impact of the revenue loss comes at a crick of time as county offices are fully transitioning to electronic record systems that will provide citizens quick and easy access to records that are most important to them. A loss of revenue will delay this transition for years. For these reasons, I stand in support of the need to increase sales tax revenues. Records of the county preserves and protects the legal rights and heritage of the citizens of Montgomery County. The county must maintain resources needed to protect these records for its citizens and generations to come. Thank you.
Hi. David didn't come in, did he?
Is it Ben Wilkerson?
Wilks.
Okay. If you'll come up there, I need to swear you in.
So Wilks.
First, if you'll raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and that we love the truth so help you God?
Okay.
And just state your name for the record and spell it, please.
Ben Wilks, W-I-L-K-S.
Okay. Thank you.
I looked at the data I got when I came in and the one thing I have to comment is everything is based on money. I think you need to deliver some sort of report to the people who are going to go ahead with this as to what the current efficiencies are of these organizations you're going to fund and how they are going to grasp in the future with those efficiencies. In other words, you don't want to spend money if the organizations are not achieving the goals they need to achieve. Money does not say everything. It just says, this is how much we need to fund it. We need to know the output of what we're spending this money on. So I would hope that you would consider instituting a program that would do this unless you already have one to ensure that the people are getting value for what money they are spending on. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, that's one of the things that we try to report a lot about and I think we heard from the previous speaker, she talked about the benefit of those dollars that we are already spending on preschool promise. So, but that's something, thank you, that's something that, you know, maybe this time next year we can have a report on some of the outcomes. Thank you.
Go ahead, I'll just sign up this meeting.
Okay.
On this topic.
Thank you. Any additional comments from commissioners? Can I mention?
Just in closing, I would like to, just in closing, I think the last piece that is extremely important for everyone, not only for me as, not as the county administrator, but as somebody who lives in this community and is going to continue to live in this community, is that, you know, in the end, we have to ask ourselves what kind of community we want to really live in. Do we want to live in a community that really is just interested in bare bones and isn't going to support the arts, is not going to support investing in people, is not going to support our youngest children, is not going to support the things that really create a quality community and a quality place to live? That's not the community I want to live in. I want to live in a community that understands that we have to be efficient and I agree with the last speaker, we've done lots of things to generate efficiency. And at the same time, we need to be able to also make sure we invest in those things that result in a quality community.
Thank you. Seriously, thank you, Jeff, for taking the lead on this. You know, the idea of financial plan was, it was a good thing that it went longer than we thought it was going to because we were able to address so many things that when we started it, we didn't know we were going to address. So to you, for your leadership, thank you. To your team, thank you for the people that were on the five-year financial plan. Thank you, all of our staff. And this hasn't been easy and I think you guys have really, including Kathy, you know, you've made it something that, it's not easy, but you've made it so that everyone, I think, can grasp what this is, how important it is. So again, thank you. I'm just going to thank the individuals who came to speak and talk to us about this. And next Tuesday at 1:30, we're going to have another public hearing on this. So if anybody's watching and wants to come down, feel free.
Well, even though unfortunately he's here now, sir, I think.
Mr. Esrati, you had signed up to speak, were you going to speak today on this issue?
I would love to. I'm sorry, this is what we're being rammed off.
All right, if you'll come up here, I'll need to swear you in for this hearing.
Okay.
If you'll raise your right hand, please. If you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God. Okay, and just state your name, please.
David Esrati, 113 Bonner Street. I apologize, still working on it really long, so. Sales tax increase hurts the working force much more than any other tax you could impose. They don't have the option of leaving the county to save or to order online from retailers that don't charge tax. It takes up a larger percentage of their disposable income since, other than food, rent, and energy, this tax supplies. Montgomery County is already one of the highest taxed counties in the state by the time we finish paying for health and human services levies, Sinclair's stew levies, Metro Park's levy, the library levy, the school levies, anything else like a streetlight assessment in Dayton. When you look at the cost of business to try to keep up with the different income tax rates for all 28 jurisdictions in this county, you can call that a tax as well. The overhead of having too many chiefs for a declining number of Indians. In the meantime, Warren County is the fastest-growing county. Their taxes are lower, and they even get a Sinclair campus with no tax levy. Go figure. But the real tax that nobody wants to talk about is the politician tax. We have way too many politicians in Montgomery County. That's because we allow almost anybody with a back forty to become a city. The city of Moraine, 6,000 people, they have to pay for a mayor and a commission and a city manager for $145,000. That works out to $25 per person, per year, to pay for a guy whose job it is to do exactly the same thing the county administrator does. The list goes on. Why does Jefferson Township have a school district with a superintendent and a treasurer when all their students total 315? If we use that formula for Dayton, we'd have 41 superintendents. And for another example, why do we have a Van Dalia, Miami's borough, Kettering, Oakwood, Dayton, and county, and the county municipal courts with a website for each, none of which, which allows basic online follow-up? And Franklin County has just one site and one municipal court system. No, raising taxes isn't the answer anymore. It makes us uncompetitive. Just like all of our little peacocks adds to our overhead and don't add much back, with every less police chief, we could have two or more sheriff's deputies on the street. With every less city manager, we could have more money for paving and sweeping streets. With every less court website, we might have a single one that actually works. If you're to be leaders, you need to come up with a better answer than just hiking another tax. It's time to hike some of these banana republics out of business and have logical, rational leadership with lower overhead and better management skills. At reconstructingdayton.org, we've begun working on the data sets and metrics to show Montgomery County voters how much all of you politicians are costing them, not only in pay per person they rule, but in how much payroll for elected official it takes to get elected in Montgomery County so you can continue to raise our taxes to pay for all of you. When voters see how much all these peacocks cost, maybe they will wake up, and it'll be time to slim down our governments instead of our wallets. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to make a motion to close the first public hearing on the levying of a 0.25 percent county sales and use tax for specific purposes to provide additional revenue for the county's general fund for a continuing period of time commencing October 1st, 2018. Sorry. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, we also have some citizens signed up to speak outside of the hearing, so I have Sheila Stanifer. Would you like to come up and give us your name and your address, and you have five minutes?
Thank you. Mark, it's initiative, it's an awesome speech. Oh, okay. Yeah, my name is Sheila Stanifer. I'm a county attorney, 399 Crawford Thomas New Ebonin, Ohio. I'm a Perry Township trustee in the southwestern portion of Montgomery County, and good evening, administrators and county commissioners. It's an honor to be here.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Of course, coming on the heels of this gentleman's statements sort of puts a little cloud over what I'm getting to say there, but I'd like to say there's, there's a COPS report on townships, and we spend less, and we manage at, at a level that's really important, so I don't agree with everything you're saying, but, but with that said, this isn't about that. So, one of the jobs that we do as township trustees is we do levy taxes. That's one of our authorities that's given to us. And obviously, government, the government needs revenues to support services. Nobody would argue with that. How would we have services without revenues? So, but according to the OAG number 6570, the Board of Trustees is a sole legislative authority in the township. It's the bottom feeder of government. That's right. Not the fiscal officer, not an employee, that would be ludicrous. Not an individual trustee, that would also be ludicrous. But sadly, in Perry Township, where I'm an elected official, I'm on my second term, during last November's election, our board president, our fiscal officer, both elected officials, and some of our employees from lack of policy being enforced, go against the majority rule decision by our township of our board ruling, which is supporting the rule of law, the need for a police and firewrecking, and also against me personally, this isn't about me, this is not sour grapes. This was because I supported the need for dire services. Our township hasn't had a police levy since 2001. We are the only township that hasn't had, we have less money coming in our town for police services than any other township. So, our own police officers, who at the time were paid among the lower scale in the county, by the way, they're excellent police officers, took the initiative on their own time, their own dime, went door-to-door educating the public on our PD's needs. There was an organized effort to purchase signs depicting "Vote No" on police and fire levy, but mind you, this effort was not from citizens in our community. This was an inside job from our elected officials and some of our employees. The signs were never registered with the Board of Elections. The signs were displayed in the arms of our elected official and employees. They didn't stop there. The fiscal officer is also a board member of the church, used as one of our polling locations where food was being prepared 50 feet from the polling location. One of our officers witnessed some egregious behavior in one of the poll workers. Some of the information, I was campaigning outside the poll while my, my competitors, who this is not the precinct, were actually inside, eating and carrying on, and one of the poll workers said, "If anybody comes in with Stanford's literature, we're going to give a provisional ballot." And they asked the officer, which is one of our officers, to tase me if I should step over the 100-foot boundary, which I wouldn't do. I'm an elected official. Why would I do that? So, with that said, our officer also noticed and took pictures of individuals present in the room where the food was being served. Secretary of State rules considered serving food less than 100 feet from the polls as bribery. ORC 3599.01, bribery, distributing food inside of a neutral zone of a polling location is absolutely prohibited. I managed to hold my seat, pulling out the most votes of all candidates running. I did that both times by considerable margin, both times, so that I have constituents that care about what goes on in our government, and they want to see it ended. Thank God, some of these wonderful citizens are here. So, this is not about sour grapes on my part. It's about the rule of law, making sure our government agencies adhere to those laws for protection of people we serve. I'll be honest, I'm a little disappointed that the perpetrators in all this never were reprimanded. In fact, fast forward, six months later, I was given a copy of a police report by the sheriff's office with the sergeant's name Hutchinson, where my name is listed as a violator of 100-foot poll rule. This is a completely false allegation. The word alleged is not found, nor is my accuser listed in this report. No statement requested of me was even asked. This is an attempt to muddy the waters of justice by some and police work by others, the lack of due diligence in their homework. It's not justice. I'm asking that the honorable commissioners would carefully consider the impact of this type of unacceptable behavior by elected officials and government agencies, here especially the Board of Elections, with respect to carrying through on their jobs to protect the people from this type of situation again. We lost our levies, our police levy by three votes. How many voters were talked out of voting for the levies after a nice hot meal served with a certain conversation? The result is a vulnerable community hurting and void of many police services, including manpower crews and protection of Perry Township. You get the gist. Our officers were devastated, and many of them had to leave because they didn't have finance to support their families. And so, with that said, the rest will finish up what I didn't say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. D'Amico.
If you'll gain our indulgence, Chris D'Amico is going to go next. We had a chronological review presented.
Okay. So, Chris, come on up.
Thank you.
And just give your name and your address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Chris D'Amico. I live at 10798 South Wool Creek Pike in Brookville, and I appreciate you being here and listening to what I have to say. My experience as a 60-plus-year resident of Montgomery County has been a very warm one. My grandfather, A.L. Oswald, was a county auditor, and he was, he was responsible in a big way for bringing the county online with computers, which I think is great. Good for you, Gramps. So, I wanted to thank you for indulging me, but I wanted to tell you about our little group of Perry Township residents. This is not party politics. Our group is comprised of Democrats, Republicans, and Independents. This crosses party lines. This has to do with our hope that we can run elections on a, on a level playing field. And Perry Township is just a microcosm of what goes on in our country, but it's important. It's where it starts. I wanted to tell you, in terms of some of my positive experiences, that I've had an occasion to have to meet with certain officials like Mr. Gruner, who took our call, made an appointment, had us down. We worked through some things, and he was completely open and willing to work with us. The same thing with Commissioner Dodge. Your office and your assistant immediately responded to us. You've been professional. You've stayed with us, tried to help us with this, and I want to take a minute to tell you how much we appreciate that from our elected officials, all right? You're the reason things work, because you're responsive to your constituents. So, this all started on November 7th, obviously, and I think you get the gist of this, that we had a number of irregularities that happened at a place called Providence Lutheran Church. Since then, I have been writing and calling many organizations to try to find out who is responsible for looking into these irregularities. And after being bounced back and forth, we finally determined that it was the sheriff's office and the Board of Elections. And this is where I have the unfortunate duty to let you know that my experience with those two offices has been less than satisfactory. One of the things that we tried to do was to ensure that a report was done by the sheriff's office about these incidences, and we got a call from the sheriff's secretary on April 2nd after we turned in a public records request, saying that that report was at the prosecutor's office, and therefore, it was not available to us. Fine. All right. But on May 21st, I got an email from the secretary, again, with a copy of the report, and there was no date on it. So, I called her back, and I said, "I, maybe it got cut off. I'm missing the date." She said, "It was just prepared yesterday." What would you, what would that lead any prudent person to believe? I'll let you draw your own conclusions. That was my first major disappointment. My other disappointments have to do with reaching out to the Board of Elections. Mark Willis from Commissioner Dodge's office has done yeoman's work, reaching out to Jan Kelly to try to get answers for our group about these irregularities, but that's as a result of a letter that I received from her on December 5th, where she's written, "The executive director," and I think it's Richter, at the Ohio Elections Commission, "Please find enclosed a copy of an election complaint regarding the November 7th, 2017 general election filed with our office." That was from us. "Per the instruction of our legal counsel, we are forwarding this complaint to you." Amazing. Jan Kelly was not able to talk with us, but a few months passed, and she was able to talk to Mark Willis from Commissioner Dodge's office. That was another major disappointment, and I'll let you draw your own conclusions. The Ohio revised code states the job description of the Board of Elections, "To investigate irregularities that go on." All right? While we are grateful for the actions that have been made, the polls were moved and an employee was removed, we feel that the Board has stopped short and ignored the major violation of one, if not two candidates, who were in the basement or in front of the church within 50 feet of, of the polling place. If no charges are going to be approved and no definitive action has been taken against either of these two candidates for their improper actions, we can only conclude that this is a political cover-up on the part of the Board of Elections. At a minimum, wouldn't it be appropriate to at least inform these two candidates in writing or counsel them via the Board of Elections if their actions were improper and a potential violation of the law? Anything short of this, once again, would depict a continuing effort to politically whitewash this entire incident." Thank you.
Thank you. Which one's next? Mr. D'Amico?
Mr. Freshour.
Okay, Mr. Freshour, come on in. Give us your name and your address, real quick.
Yes, my name is Charles Freshour, F.R.A.C., who you are, 419 Clayton Road, Brookville, Ohio.
Okay. You have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Charles Freshour, and I've been a resident of Perry Township, Montgomery County, for 31 years. I'm here this evening in an attempt to relate to our commissioners what I perceive as a lack of insight, judgment, and truthfulness regarding a Perry Township official. Excuse me. This person is a longtime incumbent Perry Township fiscal officer. You have already heard so many improprieties that have been raised this evening. This elected official continually attempts to deflect and take no responsibility for the actions that I will present to you. The actions I will relate to you this evening have taken place at Providence Lutheran Church, which is a former site of the Perry Township Precinct B polling place, and in the Perry Township, Township Administration Building. These actions that I challenge are substantiated by eyewitnesses, audio recordings, and social network postings. To be clear, my voting precinct is Perry B, the one in question. On Election Day, November 7th, 2017, I entered the North Ex of Providence Lutheran Church, which was serving as my polling place in order to cast my votes. Near the poll workers was a sign on an easel indicating that food was being served in the basement. I was also reminded of that fact by a poll worker. After voting, I proceeded to the basement where, where six to eight persons were present, but only one of whom I was personally acquainted with, that person being the current Perry Township fiscal officer who was serving as hostess of this basement's social event. As I sat with coffee and pie, persons entered and exited the basement via, via an east-side basement door. I did not recognize any of the persons that I encountered in the basement, and I have no idea if Perry B was their assigned voting precinct. In the months that followed, questions were subsequently raised about the practice of serving food at a polling place, as well as the identity of those basement's social attendees. At this time, I would like to fast-forward five months to the Perry Township trustees' meeting of April 10th, 2018. During that April meeting, the current fiscal officer related to all that were present that Perry B precinct voting would be henceforth held at the Brookville Public Library instead of Providence Lutheran Church. The stated reason was that, quote, "Some people complained," unquote, about food being served at the polling place. The fiscal officer stated that she had permission to do so, and that she had gotten personal call from the director of the Board of Elections, who I assume was Ms. Jan Kelly. For some reason, she also stated- For some reason, she also stated that the director didn't want to call her, but did anyway. There was no further elaboration regarding the subject of that call. She stated that she thought the complaints were, quote, "petty." At this time, she stated that Providence Church Council made the decision to serve food on the coming Election Day for interested parties, even though the church was no longer a polling place. She also intimated Perry Township may have to pay for a voting precinct change, blaming complainants for the necessitation of the move. Asked about the nature of complaints, she responded in the negative, stating that one must ask the complainers. Please fast-forward to this May 7th, 2018, the day before the Election Day following, was posted on her Providence Lutheran Church Facebook page. Tomorrow's Election Day, come see your fiscal officer at Providence Lutheran Church, unquote. As for this, I really don't understand what official township services your fiscal officer can or should provide at a church's social function on Election Day. My presumption is that she was acting as some type of hostess, not acting in an official capacity as a Perry Township elected official. If this was an official function, were wages involved for her services? If not, why did she represent herself in an official manner? The following day, Election Day, May 8th, 2018, a printed sign appeared near the road in front of the entrance to Providence Lutheran Church and read as follows, quote, "Perry B voting was moved to the Brookville Library due to a complaint last fall regarding the church serving an Election Day meal. The location to vote was moved, but the food and great fellowship were made at Providence Lutheran Church. Don't miss the homemade cooking and tasty desserts. Let's not have a handful of folks who complained ruin the great conversation and the delicious meal. Election Day meal downstairs, or grab a cup of coffee and a pastry on your way to work." This was posted on her Facebook page. I will be perfectly clear. I have no quarrel with Providence Lutheran Church, the pastor, or the parishioners. My wife and my son and I were members of Providence for many years. We still have friends and acquaintances who attend there. We still receive the monthly church bulletin, even. What I do have a problem with is an organizer, hostess, and fiscal officer who will not take responsibility for actions that clearly disregard the Secretary of State's Directive 2012-19 and Ohio Revised Code 3599.01. Complaints did not cause Perry B's precinct location to be changed. The disregard of voting regulations was the cause. Have the parishioners sitting on the church council at Providence been advised that the complainants are at fault, or have they been told the truth? As has been previously stated, unknown persons, whether or not Perry B was their assigned precinct, were seen entering and exiting the lower east side of the church. If these persons entering and exiting had not yet voted, were there any votes compromised by persons who may have been present in the church basement? Polling locations are not ice cream socials or Sunday barbecues. We will never know the individuals who entered from the alternative location and what role, if any, these in attendance may have played. Could some have influenced others? Could political agendas have been set forth? Absolutely, this scenario is debatable, but certainly not out of the realm of possibility. A 2017 ballot initiative was separated by only three votes. A 2015 Perry Township election for trustee was separated by only fourteen votes. We will never know if the disregard of election protocol may have played a role in this or any other elections. Every individual is responsible for their own personal actions. Blaming others for one's mistakes are not only disingenuous, but seriously undermines one's credibility." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freshour. All right. Clean up better.
Thank you.
Mr. D'Amico.
Thank you for indulgence and letting us go.
Sure. Oh, no, that's fine.
My name is Mike D'Amico. I live at 10798 South Wolf Creek Pike. I've been a resident of Perry Township for about fifteen years. I want to talk about, just briefly, the report, per se, that we submitted to the Sheriff's Office. And briefly frame my background. Twenty-five years at the Sheriff's Office. The Citizens Group contacted me and asked that I try to put together a report of what occurred. We did do that, and having been familiar with the office, ultimately, the Sheriff's Office leaving after twenty-five years and being in a commanding administrative position, I felt that I could contact Sheriff Plummer and meet with him with this report. I did do that. And a sergeant by the name of Hutchinson was assigned to this investigation. My first contact with him was by my phone calls, since we hadn't received no information from him or contact concerning our situation. His first statement to me was, "I'll need to call Jan Kelly for direction." Jan Kelly, however, as you now know, was a person of interest in this matter. So, calling her for direction was irregular and disturbing. She sent a letter to Mr. D'Amico that she had been advised by her attorney not to comment to the matter. Sergeant Hutchinson stated that he thought the incident was about Sheila Stanfer, another Perry Township trustee, demonstrating clearly that he had not read the report of several pages that we had submitted to him, and had no grasp of the matter. The complaint was about candidate Melissa Mears and a section of the law that applies under the guidelines of the Secretary of State of Ohio. The next point, Sergeant Hutchinson demanded to know why Perry Township Officer Steve Nelson did not take the matter to District Court and file charges. Mr. D'Amico, myself, reminded him that Sergeant Hutchinson, as he had a responsibility to conduct this investigation, as he was requested to do so through the chief of Perry Township, Chief Reinhardt. Sergeant Hutchinson stated that there was no basis for a complaint because there was no complainant, and also, there was no proof that any votes were changed. I reminded him that I was the complainant, and that the law did not require approving that votes were changed. When I told him this, he said to me, "It's only a misdemeanor. Why would you bother making such a report?" Then, in an argument in an aggressive manner, he joked and stated, "Do you call whenever you see someone speeding?" At that point, I reminded him, we were talking about a basic constitutional right, an important issue in this country, and that's the right to vote. Finally, he stated to me, "There was no law against Melissa Mears serving food." And I informed him that the allegation of candidate Melissa Mears serving food was demonstrating a lack of knowledge about the incident. Once again, we were concerned that there was a potential cover-up concerning the food being served and approved by Ms. Jan Kelly, and as it appeared, she was a person with friendship of the township fiscal officer, Rhonda Barn... or, excuse me, Rhonda Bankton, now. That is her name. So, my request for our group, and hope and summary, real quick, is that we hope that maybe the commissioners would consider collectively, in whatever facet of authority or offer of help that she could give us, maybe as little as a joint letter to the Board of Elections. We have asked to meet with her, Ms. Kelly. She has ignored our letters. We're not asking that Melissa Mears be arrested or charged with a crime, even though clearly there was a violation according to Ohio law in at least three different actions. We would want to know and request that somehow she was met with, documented, and informed that her activities were improper and illegal, and ensure that that never occurs again. And we would hope that she would consider some help for us in that regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. So, what are your thoughts about... We probably need to talk about this with the prosecutor, don't we?
Yes, I would defer to the chief on this, because this is a Board of Elections issue, so I guess... Chief?
Well, you're putting me on the spot.
That's why you're the chief.
That's why you're the chief.
This is true. This is true.
I'm going to pay for this later. I understand.
You might. But you county commissioners do not have the jurisdiction of the Board of Elections, and the Board of Elections and the Ohio Elections Commissions are the ones who have control over and the investigative authority over any election or voter irregularities.
Thank you. Do it, yeah. That's all I know, where they just keep getting about.
And that's why I said, we can talk about this, and we can probably, you know, make some phone... I mean, I know Commissioner Dodge's office already has, but I think, you know... I mean, so Jan just said she will not meet with you at all?
She's never responded to any of the letters. No response.
Okay.
I can tell you the complaint has been investigated and was presented, and charges were refused.
Charges were refused. Okay.
I neglected to say, if I could, that the report that was submitted to the prosecutor's office, embarrassingly, is not an investigation. It is a undated memorandum, basically with the tone of why no one wants to do anything.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Thank you. Would you like to come forward? We don't typically have people shot out from the... So, please.
I ran into the same sort of circle pointing...
Can you say your name for the record, please?
Oh, David. That's already one thirteen bonister. But last year, I found that Dr. Adil Begirov did not live within the city limits or within the Dayton School District, was in office. I called the prosecutor. I called the Board of Elections. I called the Secretary of State's office. I called the Ohio Ethics Commission. I called the Ohio Attorney Generals. Everybody pointed their finger at somebody else. Nobody did anything. We have a serious problem with enforcement of basic laws about our politicians. And when it came down to Election Day, and he had changed his residency, I then presented it to the school board and said, "Now will you have him resign." They wouldn't do anything the next day. That night, their attorney said, "Not up to me." So, I had to say, "I'm going to file a writ of mandamus in court at noon the next day if he hasn't resigned already." And he resigned at 11:30. However, I have no legal standing to file a writ of mandamus, because I wasn't somebody who'd run for the office seat or whatever else. There was nobody willing to take this up, and he stayed in office from April 5th all the way till November 9th illegally. We have a problem in Montgomery County, and although it's not your responsibility, the people that are doing this seem to get away with it at will. And it ruins... It destroys the fundamental foundation of our election system if nobody will enforce the law. And it shouldn't be up to me. I should be able to go to somebody, the prosecutor, and get a response. Wouldn't do a thing. So, we have it on record. I mean, I made the complaint. I showed all the documentation, all the shell corporations, how he had him file for his ethics statement about corporations. Later on, we found out that he received $250,000 from an offshore account into one of his shell corporations that he had never reported, that's tied to this organization or this thing that The Guardian of London calls "The Azerbaijani Laundromat." I mean, it's international news, and now this man is running for office again. We have a problem. Somebody needs to address it. This is actually... It's important, but this is small potatoes compared to what went on with the Dayton School Board and Dr. Adil Begirov. And everybody's going around like, "Na, na, 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 na." That's just a Zoradi. No, it's all documented. It's all clear. And he did resign because he did live out in the Van Daley Butler School District. And I don't know how this just gets brushed off and why the media didn't do anything about it either. This is what we trust, those people that are paid more to run that Board of Elections than our county commissioners are paid. And they're not doing the job. And we can't fire them, and we can't... Those of... You know, it's supposed to be up to the political parties? I'm sorry. Whoever put them in charge of running our elections, they're our elections, and the people that we have doing it are criminal, because nobody will follow up on things like this. I know you can't serve food in a polling place. I know you can't wear political gear into a place of election, though that's changed now. I know the rules about how far away from the polling place, and I know that if I broke those laws, I'd be in the Houskow in a red second, just like that. So, what are you going to do? When are you going to go to the Attorney General of the state and say, "I want an investigation"? Or when are you going to go to the DOJ and say, "Look, we got a problem in Ohio, because John Houston isn't doing his job"? So, thank you very much, and I'm sorry for taking up...
No, it's okay. Thank you.
Two.
Thank you. No, I mean...
Can I go back upstairs, or just real quick?
Well, we've just let everybody do everything to go right. Because our staff doesn't mind staying here all night.
This is short compared to a school board meeting.
I know. This is what happens at those school board meetings. Why we keep things going here. No, you're lying.
How about Sheila Stanfer? Do I have to say the address?
No. We got you.
And you know who I am. Okay.
But you don't get five minutes.
Okay. Don't worry. I'm going to talk real fast. I'm going to just say this from my heart, okay? I was the girl next door. I'm a registered nurse, and when I decided to run, you know, just like all of you in here, you know, we want to make a change. We want to make a difference. So, I ended up going into this township not knowing what I was... Oh, my gosh. You know, seeing some things right off the bat, because you take the oath to uphold the Ohio Constitution, which I read, and I read the Constitution of the United States. How many people actually do that and take oath? I did. And I know you did, because you're a lawyer. And so, you know, saw a lot of irregularities and was pointing them out nicely, though I'm a nice person. But that didn't go over so well. And so, I've been the enemy from the beginning. But I'm sharing all this with you, because my husband, my husband, my dear precious husband, in September of last year, said, "I'm not feeling so good, Sheila." I took him to the hospital. Three weeks later, my husband, he dies. He dies. But he said to me, "Sheila, you get back in there. You get back in there a week before the election. You get back in there." I'm like, "I don't want to do this. I don't want to do this. It's so painful." You know, the abuse that's heaped on you as an elected official. You know, I think I get more heaped on me than senators and stuff. I need to run for a higher office. But he said, "No, you do it. You've got to do what's right. You've got to stand up for what's right. You get back in there, and you do that." And I said, "Okay, honey, I will." And you know how hard it was to plant my signs? And I had people going, "Did your husband just die?" And I'm like, "I'm doing this for my husband. I am doing this for my husband." And watching what took place, the irregulars that took place, that they didn't support the rule of law, the majority of the board rule, the opposite, you know, the other trustee... But the devastation it's actually caused in our community and the morale of our police department for six months, watching these guys, one by one. They'd catch me in the parking lot, seeing the flap that I'd taken. They'd say, "Sheila, thank you for what you do for us. Thank you for supporting us. Thank you for putting up with this abuse. How do you do it?" And I'm like, "It's God. It's God." So, the point is, the devastation that it's caused on our community was enormous, because we lost a lot of our officers. And that affects our whole community. We're down to one cruiser. I mean, you realize, the criminals know when you don't have your cruisers. And it's serious. And the downplay of all this, and what happened at that polling place, it all works together, and it's very devastating on our town. That's 36 square miles. There's 6,000 people. It's big. And so, we're just appealing to you, because your voices matter in this situation, because instead of deflecting it as a complaint... I mean, there were some serious things done to me personally. I'm the victim in this. I'm the victim. I'm the one that was legally in the parking lot, passing out my stuff behind a hundred foot. I wasn't in there fraternizing and doing all that. I'm the victim here. And I'm asking you, the commissioners, if you would please at least send a note to the Board of Elections that there's better treatment when these kinds of things are shared with them. And it was shared over a period of hours, and they knew what was going on, and there was... It was very slow to do anything about it. And so, the other thing would be the perpetrators in this, too, that they would... Because they're elected officials. That they would be saying, "Do you realize, I mean, your position, how you need to honor your constituents, and that is not how you should conduct yourself." And I think they need to hear that, at least hear that. And if you would do that, that's going to go a long way in our community to maybe stopping and shutting some of this stuff down for the sake of 6,000 people. And so, we really appreciate your time. Thank you, Sheila.
Can I just ask a factual question, because I know Mrs. D'Amico mentioned this, but was... Did he say that you sent a letter to the Elections Commission and nothing...
Are you talking about the State Elections Commission? I talked with their Mr. Richter, and he said, "We don't..." Is it Richter?
Phil Prager.
He said, "We don't really deal with these things at the Ohio Elections Commission. We only deal with violations that have to do with the money that's involved. We don't deal with this."
We don't deal with this. It's handled at the county level."
The sheriff, he said typically the sheriffs of the county handle it.
Now, I've done some research since then, which also has enlightened me that that is not true. But that was the response that I got.
I've been at tennis ball for the last six months. Have you guys, I know you reached out, tried to reach out to Jan, did you try to reach out to the board members yet of the Board of Elections?
I didn't think it was appropriate to pass Jan. I was trying to be respectful, they're her boss. So, okay, well, maybe we can talk after.
Thank you so much. All right.
And Mark has kept me informed on what's going on and it's very frustrating.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you everyone for being here. I think you all know that we don't typically do evening meetings, but it was, it was nice, I think, but I'm sure nobody else does but me. Okay, commissioners, do you have anything else?
No, I just wanted to remind everyone, if you want to come down next Tuesday at 1:30, that would be June 26th, and we're gonna have another, our last public hearing on the proposed income sales tax increase. So, how about either of you? Do you have anything? Okay.
Just, on Thursday, we're gonna have the grand opening for a company called Hematite, which is, Michael and Eric have been working very hard on. It's Canadian, Canadian auto manufacturer, 100 employees. It's a, it's a negve wood, it's a nice project and it's gonna hire, hire a bunch of, bunch of good jobs.
We're excited about them, you know, the potential for spin-off with, you know, suppliers and all of that. But we went, we saw them in Canada, Eric and I, it's exciting that they're here and they're actually gonna be, well, they're already open, yeah, they are, but we're doing the official. Okay, you talked a lot tonight, but you have anything else to say?
So I have nothing further to say.
Come on. Well, again, thank you to everyone and all of you for being here. Thanks a lot. And our next meeting, as Judy said, is next Tuesday, right here at 1:30.
I'm good, you're good?
Okay, so, all this is paper?
Aye.
Aye.